All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of Lewisburg Area Board of Board Directors. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And pledge of allegiance. The board met executive session for about thirty minutes before this evening's meeting to discuss some legal student and personnel matters. Our first item will be any students and citizens comments to the board on agenda items. Do you have anyone here with or anything online?
Nothing online.
All right, we're on the board representatives comments. Paula, you want to get started?
I will get us started. So I don't know, October has always been one of my favorite months, I think, of the of the school year because you've got that beginning of the year hecticness and getting things off the ground and running and people are settled into routines and activities are up and going and you know, just the energy that comes about in October, I think, is just is just a really special time of the school year. So some of the things that are taking place right now, two of our seniors, I met one of them, Lucy Dawson Roy, who was here in the September board at the board meeting, and Mariah Drexler. They are going around into the senior classes and getting students registered to vote along with their work with the League of Women Voters. Again, it's a nonpartisan, you know, initiative and effort, but you know, we all know the importance of, you know, having having that right and that opportunity in our country to be able to do that. So it's always wonderful that we have students that like to take part in that effort of the voter registration drive. Also, Mrs. Cre and Mrs. Galt are in the midst of planning the Gold evening again for this year. This year will be in the first weekend of December, that Friday evening. For those of you who may not be familiar, Gold stands for Girls Only Leadership Development. It's program now going into its third year. So it's a great blend of activities that, you know, we have speakers that are females in leadership positions. They do small group activities. You know, they're here for an extended time from like five thirty till about eleven thirty. We, you know, provide transportation for those who may not have it. And really, it's just all about, you know, getting, you know, young females, getting them, you know, aware of the different opportunities that are available to them. And we also have juniors and seniors that serve as advisors. This year they have their own club. And they are also working to develop some of the activities and input into what takes place that evening. And so it's really exciting, especially when you consider our juniors are the first group of students that have this program during their freshman year. So we applaud and look forward to that happening again this year here.
Good evening, everyone. A couple of events. Yeah, everything's very busy. At the high school events are underway. Couple of events for this weekend, Broadway Bistro with our choir group. So it's a time, I believe we have twenty students who will be performing on Saturday at six o'clock. It's a fun style setup. It's in the high school cafeteria. They perform some different theme pieces. And throughout the evening, students will also be serving food as part of the fundraising aspect of that. So it's an event where people can come for dinner, listen to good music, and it's just a fun environment that the students have. So come for some conversations with them this week. It seems like they're going to be dressing up a little bit more this time to meet their theme. So it seems like they're really looking forward to that this weekend. Monday this week, we had a field trip to Craig Hillier Leadership Workshop. So that was for student athletes. We had four of our student athletes attend the leadership. The purpose of the leadership workshop was just basically to engage with student athletes of how to become leaders, how to become better leaders. So these were four students who would be underclassmen who are looking to probably take on some leadership or some captain roles for next season. So they had some different interactive activities, some different life lessons that they went through and those pieces that they could then bring back to their respective teams and share some of what they have learned. So it's a really valuable thing. We've sent students to the workshop before. And Craig Hillier has worked through the country with some of these leadership groups. So that was something that was very valuable for some of our students. And then lastly, also this weekend, our field hockey team has their home game for Senior Day. So they've been working hard on the road for sure, but definitely a high need for recognition for their season with all of their efforts this fall. So that is at eleven o'clock at Bucknell for that senior recognition and just some great support for our field hockey team this year.
This week, we were able to please to welcome Jennifer Drewin from Transitions of Pennsylvania into the building. As we know, these little things aren't going anywhere. And she did a lesson with all of our ninth graders in English classes. I think that was called like digital drama, but how miscommunication and discommunication in general via social media and online can escalate and get out of hand. So how avoid pitfalls of that and then like kind of what to do if and when it happens to deescalate those situations and have like good outcomes. So we're really pleased to have that last presenter speak as well.
Hi, everybody. So at the middle school, I want to start with a teacher highlight. We've been talking about AI as a district and discussing where we go with policy with guidelines. But one of the things we've stressed is we don't want to stifle anyone's creativity. And we've already started looking at how teachers can use AI for good in the classroom. And I wanted to share one of our seventh grade English teachers, Ms. Bethany Acker, found an awesome way to promote the beneficial use of AI with her students. Their students are working through a unit on mood and were looking at two different poems and analyzing the mood of those poems and looking at word choice and how an author's use of specific words can set the mood in a poem. So the students for each poem picked five words that they identified as contributing to the mood and put those into an AI image generator on Canva, which we have a district account for all students and staff. And based on the words they chose, it generated an image. So it was really neat to see. I was actually doing a formal observation that day. And it was really neat to see how, based on the different words students use, different images were generated. So Ms. Acker had the students, and this was over, you know, a week or two of instruction, analyzing different poems. They had the students like gallery style, display the images and really analyze how, first of all, does the image that was generated actually fit the poem's mood and how with tweaking a couple of words, generate different images. So it was just something to highlight a really neat use of the beneficial side of AI and the creativity that Ms. Acker brings to the middle school. Something else exciting, it's election season, as Mrs. Reber alluded to, and Miss Gina Buskirk's been working hard to plan a mock election at the middle school. So our social studies teachers this week and last week have been teaching students about the election process, political parties, what they mean, the voter registration process, electoral college, and then voting on Election Day. So over the next two to three weeks, students have the opportunity to register to vote in our cafeteria. We have student workers set up at the table and our students actually have to fill out a voter voter registration card. And then on Election Day, we'll have our mock election at the middle school. But it really does teach the students that the importance of registering, because if they don't register over these next three weeks, they will vote on Election Day. And but luckily, our student workers have been scouring the cafeteria today. Actually, one of your children was standing at the next to the chips, which is when we leave the lunch line and saying, did you vote? Or did you register? Did you register? Did you register? So I just love to see how, you know, engaged the students are and the excitement that's building. And it really does give the the teachers who know the content best a chance to teach it in a really appropriate, simple way. Because we know so often it's can be skewed, just depending on the resources that are out there. But a lot of confidence in our teachers to do a really good job teaching the voting process. And it's field trip season. So it's like at the high school, Mr. West recently took a group of students to Penn State University to learn about the Nittany Lion Fund, which is a student managed investment through the College of Business at Penn State. Next week, all sixth graders will go to the Greenland Pitch Conference at Susquehanna University. And then the following day, students in our Life Skills and Athletic Support Programs visit their Warbox Farm in Catalissa for a community based outing. And Mrs. Gogler will be taking a group of students to the Pliny Air Experience at the Dale Annual Walker House that she runs every year. So a lot going on at the middle school. Paula said it was a really good time of year. Good evening. Just wanted to share and kind of follow up. You've gotten some presentations and heard some feedback on some of the positions you approve and some of the changes. But just to kind of follow back up with the importance of those and just the effectiveness and then the benefits. Just want to share and to have you here all that. With bringing Debbie Colback as a social worker, she was in our district. You know, stepped away to spend time with family and is two days a week at the elementary level. And while we've done things and been able to make things work with our own team at school to still provide social skills and the things kids need, just having her there is another resource. She's incredible at what she does. And we've been trying to be very thoughtful with how we're going to implement her services and how we're going to utilize her skills. At both buildings, it's been wonderful having her there. She's jumped right in, getting familiar with the staff, with the students, really supporting us in any way we see fit. And with some of our kids, especially at the younger level, there's still some struggling to make it through the day and spend time learning for more than a couple of minutes. So just having an extra set of hands to work with those kids and to teach new skills and strategies. And it's a team effort. So having her there is a part of that. It's been wonderful. So we're very thankful she's back with us. Also with Hannah, she was here and showcased some of the things that she's been doing. Having her in that role has been wonderful. Even the data we're seeing already to support the new curriculum we've implemented with thirty-five percent group instead of super kids. And just having her, that's her focus. So she can really dedicate her time and her expertise on the science of reading and helping us with professional meetings and really looking at data with our teachers. And we've always had data there. We've been data rich forever, but we're really digging into it and understanding the meaning of it more and using it, I think, to guide our instruction. And having teachers take a lot of ownership in that process where at times she could chime in and correct some things, but really learning with them and letting them learn as we look at that data early in the year and use that for MTSS is a big piece at Kelly where we're using that to create groups and give kids the direct instruction they need that meets their needs. As part of that, the word has spread about ninety-five percent group that we're using and her role. Two reading specialists from Midflambeau reached out and they spent a day at Kelly Elementary this past week just to learn about the products, to see them in action. They spent time with Hannah to hear her approach and what we're doing there at Kelly. They came away super impressed and super excited. So even connecting and networking her in our area and being able to show what we're doing, the teachers are seeing. It was it was a big ask to say we're getting rid of super kids. We're not buying this curriculum that's going to be super scripted and you can just follow everything. We're going to pull different resources that we feel are powerful and important and we're going to dig in and make it work. So to have them come in and really validate for our teachers, coupled with the data we're seeing, they're seeing it is working and it it was worth it. Yes, there are things we can still improve upon and we're having those discussions, but just thankful that the direction we're heading there as well. And then the last thing, October is Fire Safety Month. So we had the Winfield Fire Company and it's not, we're not competing with William Cameron or anything. We just have a parent and an uncle that works for Winfield. And normally William Cameron reaches out like, no, there's no bad blood. It's, we can't say no to a father and an uncle with kids. So he brought Adam Rutter, his name, he brought one of the fire trucks there, talks to the kids, lets them try on the uniform. They get to see some of the equipment. It's always exciting to hear the kids just ooh and ah the saws that they use. They get to go up onto the truck, sit in the seats in the back of the truck. So it's just a great experience for our kindergarten kids. We have some awesome pictures on Facebook if you want to check it out. Even a little boy in full adult fire equipment, a little unsure if he can even move. He loved it though. We did talk to him after to make sure he was hiding that smile inside there. Just a fun thing and it's just a great opportunity to bring that to our students and to give them that experience.
Last week, on Thursday at Kelly, we had our PSA come and organize a Dragon Dash pep rally for our kindergarten first grade students. Then they did a separate one for second and third grade just to get them excited about the Dragon Dash coming up next Thursday. For a lot of these kids, they they've heard or they've seen siblings do it for our kindergarteners, but to get them excited and understand the role that they play in raising funds and how those funds can kind of get put back into programming within the district was just really exciting. So we had now our Bucknell Men's Basketball Team and Bucky came too. They did contests with the students with the the Dragon Dash next Thursday. We also had Stop Out Bullying Week at both Kelly and Lindtown this week. We try to keep things consistent with the theme day. Last week, leading up to Stop Out Bullying Week and this week, just do targeted lessons with each individual.
Love when guests stay with us, but we don't expect you to have to do the rest of the board meeting if you don't want to. So thank you so much. All right, Claudia, I need a motion to approve.
Yeah, we have to. Any discussion? All right, Paula.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Dr. Brand?
Yeah.
Ms. Hinoz?
Yeah.
Mr. Fie?
Yeah.
Dr. Blonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Crum?
Yeah.
Motion carry, motion carry.
So sometimes at the high school level.
Our coach is not opposed to this for that same reason. And again, I bring it forward to you for your awareness at this time. We'll reach a point in time where we'll need to make that decision. I entertain any thought or question at this point in time, but again, it's to make you aware that this is under consideration.
What would be the biggest downside if there is one?
The biggest downside would be if it were many players and parents concerned for playing time and competition within the team. And so that's something to be carefully considered. Hello, Josh, anything else to offer relative to this?
I think you shared most of it. It is a one, it would be a one year. So something that could be reviewed, absolutely.
Yeah, I like that it can be reviewed and it's good to be good neighbors because sometimes you'll have things that you might want to make yourself.
And they do. There is, there is. And it's just lacrosse is not a super popular sport here and so not every school has it. And unfortunately, there's not.
In the upcoming year, like we do have a lacrosse world. That we do have a lacrosse club locally is what usually is the theater for our high schools. And then the numbers for Lewisburg are are very low. So like, I think my son would be only eighth grade lacrosse player. So like, we need other players if we're going to have a lacrosse team.
It's number one.
I love my son, but he's not carrying the team.
Are we recording? Okay, so.
So maybe it's information at this point. Thank you.
Our next item is the twenty twenty-five board meeting calendar, but also the December twenty twenty-four. Just by the way, the dates fall and you can take a look there. And we may have some things that, oh, thank you, some things that need decisions coming up. And so when Kathy and Cory and I and Vince and others met, we talked about moving December second to December fifth to not have such a large gap. But and I'm sorry to surprise you, because I meant to catch the dates before we came out of exact, but December twelfth might even be better because I think there's probably going to be some things that need to appear on personnel reports and that sort of thing. I don't know. We don't have to make this decision tonight. It's just for everyone's awareness. The problem is there's a really big gap between December second, this year will be December second all the way till January ninth. And there's quite a few things that may come up in that timeframe that we, maybe that's a pretty long time to go between and December second is a Monday, so it's.
In years of a local election that has board seats, the PA School Code calls for that meeting to be on a Monday. This year, without that, we're not bound by a Monday meeting. And whether or not board seats fit to move to one of our one of typically, we have just one in the month, but obviously, school business goes on, personnel decisions are made throughout. And yet, a respect for holidays and travel time that involve everyone is what brings the thought that we may want to move the board date for December of this year away from Monday, December second. We need to do some advertising. We need to be cautious about adhering to school regulation in any consideration. But proposed is the idea that we perhaps move from that Monday so early in the month to a later date. So checking calendars and giving thought to that. And as we would come back in to our second meeting this month in October is when we really should be determining if we're looking at making a change of date.
Exactly.
Go on to the ones because we'll soon come forward with meeting dates in twenty twenty-five. Erin, Cory, Vince, Kyle, and I were talking about those June and July dates as well. It is often the case that two meetings in June seem to be one too many for everyone's vacations and personal schedules. So we talked a bit about that.
And if we're being honest, Cory doesn't want anyone to bring his time markers, so.
They're often very brief meetings with very little business. That is fair. And likewise, the July meeting, we've moved from second Thursday or third Thursday in that month. And so again, some decisions that need to be made with respect to dates in June and July. Anything else?
No, I would say this. So just so everyone's very clear about this year, the November fourteenth date is like the last possible. It's the, you know, having only one meeting in the month of November, it's the latest it could possibly be. So we would have only a little bit of time between the November meeting and the December meeting, probably not a lot accumulated in terms of business. So that's why, just to split the difference, we could look at the fifth or the twelfth because I do think some things are going to be needing business at that time. The same exact thing happens then again in the end of twenty twenty-five. And that's when we would go from a December first to a January eighth, which is also again quite a long break. It is an election year though, so I think that is different. So what we would have to do if we needed it, which we may not, would be yeah, have a meeting. It's just something to keep in mind. Sometimes the dates fall where there's long stretches that just because we do second and fourth and not something related to how many days in between. We will come back at the next meeting and have a quick discussion about that. Does anyone have an initial thought about getting some things done?
Yeah, no, I can understand wanting to push it a little later. I mean, in general, it is good to go wide berth around the end of December.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're not having two meetings.
So pushing too far into December, maybe not as good, but I mean, certainly the fifth and maybe the I wouldn't want to.
No, we're not going any further because, yeah, nothing's, nothing's happening in the
For next year, this past year, didn't, did we cancel our second June meeting this year?
No, you had it and it was twenty seconds. I wasn't there.
We have a brief.
We've talked about it. All right, good for consideration. Okay, so the next item is the Board President's Report. And so I actually am going to share some information if that's, is it ever one of them, okay? We've had a few questions recently, and so I'll just read this prepared statement. Lewisburg Area School District Administration Staff and Board of School Directors are committed to being responsive to public questions and comments regarding our athletics programs and facilities. Common question asked of many of us is why does Lewisburg Area School District have a football stadium? The LIHS varsity football team typically plays five or six home games each year. The longstanding home venue has been Bucknell University Stadium, which the district rents for only fifteen hundred dollars per game. And our concessions arrangement with Bucknell allows the all sports boosters to keep forty percent of the proceeds. The cost to use Bucknell Stadium for all home games in a year is most at most nine thousand dollars. If the district were to build a stadium, the estimated cost cost is close to twenty million dollars. Even if we could fund part of the cost and borrowed, say, ten million dollars, the cost of payments on a ten million dollar loan at three percent, which I was informed today we would not get, we would probably get something closer to four if we even thought about it with a twenty year term, which is how we funded recently. We're going to be in the range of six hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars a year in payment on the debt to do a stadium. The other thing is the stadium has costs of upkeep, which are about ten thousand dollars a year and replace them with the turf, which is about a million dollars every ten years. We also are very aware that cost to build here at this property would exceed costs of similar projects. People may have seen in the news elsewhere because it's undeveloped land. Districts who have done renovations on their other properties had track and facilities in place and had to renovate those. This would be new. And we have the geological concerns like the periodic shale and underground water that we are aware of from our previous land development plans. We currently have debt that we hold that costs, you know, two point seven million dollars per year in debt payments and they won't be paid off until twenty forty. Important date to keep in mind. People have asked about other potential options for having something like a stadium. So upgrading the turf fields here at the high school or upgrading the infield at Pauling and having stadium seating. There's reasons that neither of these are feasible options. Here at the turf fields, the two sides are flanked by wetlands, so you can't put bleachers on both sides. And then there's just a retention pond on the one end, so there's no seating options there. And we just built the dragon's den with the number of restrooms to be compliant with the number of permanent seats that we have. So we would have to think about building additional permanent restrooms. And we don't yet even have the light sound system, press box and other things that we're working to raise money to do. At the Pauling Complex, it would require lights and sound, a press box, increased bleacher seating, additional restrooms and more parking. And it's fairly constrained there in terms of space to develop. And also, I don't know that this would necessarily happen, but you want to be good neighbors in a residential space and our our games often run past ten PM. And so we're talking about lights and sound are very close to some homes right there. So football is not the only sport that does not have a dedicated home venue. Bowling, golf and swimming and diving all use other venues in the community and non, so non-district facilities for practice and competitions. So I just wanted to put that out there to remind ourselves for people who have questions. This information will be shared with the board to continue sharing out as this question arises. And because we have directors' comments and we can have a discussion of this as as needed, but it will come up potentially in a future committee of the whole work session. Okay.
Well, first of all, I want to thank our present presenters for being here today and sharing about food insecurity is an important topic. But thank you guys for coming and sharing that. We'll do our part to promote how we can on our social media, our website, to our students and our staff as well. So again, thank you for coming and sharing. I appreciate that. Principals, thank you for sharing your comments about things going on in your buildings. Kathy and I got to walk. Kathy and I got to walk the, the grounds today and saw our tennis court project and did our final walkthrough of that project. The parking lot has been, not a lot of use, and then various athletic events that we've had. It's been a great addition. Our tennis team got to be on there for their last match of the season, as well as a district match this week, which they won. They, they had a match today as well. Up in South Williamsport, I'm not sure how they did, I didn't hear that yet, no, nothing. But again, great space for them to be at for the future as well. So it's exciting to be out there for that. Also got to see the track and turf project. They moved a lot of dirt out of the middle of that and working on that drainage basin. And we had some rain this past week, but they're moving along, they're actually working tomorrow, they don't work on Fridays, they work a four-day week, but they're working tomorrow to keep on pace and on, on target. So it looks very good over there. It's cool seeing that project come to fruition. This week, I got to meet with our guidance counselors and social workers, meeting with them monthly, I met with them last year as well. I got to hear about, about their perspective of, of beginning of the school year. We've got a fantastic group of counselors and social workers across the district, so just great hearing the great things that they're doing and working with kids, guidance classes that are happening at our various buildings, different programs with you and outside providers that they're helping to coordinate. One of our tasks as that committee meets is to work on our Guidance 339 Plan, which is due this year, it's due in March. And so that's a lot of focus on our career artifact collection, as well as their guidance services. And so that's going to be a standing monthly meeting with them. And so again, great to work with that group. Today, I want to thank Michael for leading a workshop with eight of our teachers on Read and Write. It is a Chrome extension. Now I could have pulled it up here on my screen if you can see it, but Chrome extension just kind of lives up here. When you turn this on, when you're on a webpage that has more text than this, it does for our students and for our staff, it can simplify webpages, it can read aloud to them, it can assist lots of assistive tech for them without really drawing a lot of attention to it. They can use that tool very non, we're very discreetly, so it's a great tool for them to have in their, in their hands. We wanted to get it out to some key teachers for them to use it, use it well, and then share with the rest of our staff in the future. And so they had that workshop today, which Kohlzick is an expert in it, and so he shared his knowledge base with them today, and so that was great to see, having him come out to school to do that. And then lastly, this coming Monday, we're doing our regional in-service like we did last year. This time, Dr. Graham mentioned it at the last meeting, I did share with you in your board docs there, there is a, a link to the Read and Write as well as the link to the conference. All the sessions are in there, if you click on the session descriptions, you can see all the great topics that are going to be in there, as well as two awesome keynotes. One keynote is by Adam Welcome, he's an international speaker that I've got to know over the past two years, and coming to do the first initial keynote about how kids deserve it and it's a very great education. Very motivating speaker, excited to see him again, as well as Matt Mervis is the second keynote focusing on the topic of A I. and how we interact with that in schools. Followed by an afternoon of breakout sessions, which again, take a look at those vast listing of, of sessions. Two of them are being run by our, two of our teachers. Hannah, who was here last week, is presenting one on the science of reading and structured literacy, and Sarah Miller is doing one on A I. as well. So looking forward to that. And if you are free on Monday and want to join us for the conference, we could definitely probably get you in as well. I could probably sneak you in the side door. But that's our Cisco Henning University, and again, a great venue for that for many schools in the region to be at, and our staff will be there on Monday. So again, no, no school for kids on Monday, but a great in-service day, looking forward to that, but thank you.
Thank you. Did you mention 800?
800 registered from the various schools.
Yeah.
Where we're sending our full staff.
All right, so Joe, you sent out a nice summary for us, just to remind everyone about some A I. stuff. Anything you want to highlight for the audience?
Yeah, nothing new, just to repeat, as we talked about, there's a Board Development Day on October 30th evening, includes dinner, table conversations, and then a presentation. R S B P by next Wednesday for that, and then there's some other program.
You sent agenda. Anybody need anything to help out or is there a motion to approve that?
Do we typically, do we typically have knowledge of the gift amounts in the Green Dragon? That's not something we typically see.
No. We will get sometimes a memo that has a total amount, like of what you donate.
I just know that I've seen an amount before, so I wouldn't be sure.
Yeah, or it'll say like some, like a, like a violent value to whatever. If it's an in-kind, we usually get a value on it.
Thank you, I'm good.
So is that a motion to approve?
Sure.
Thank you, Jonathan Mervis. Do I hear a second? Is that my Ms. Crowe? Oh, any?
Paula? Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Mr. Feather?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Feath?
Yes.
Dr. Blonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Our next item is citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. This is, anything coming in, anything out in the wild?
Nothing online and see you.
All right. Director's comments. Ashley, why don't we start with you?
Yeah, I want to say I do appreciate the implementation about food insecurity because I think it's in one of those groups that you don't often hear from or see, it's really, it can be easy to forget, right, or to kind of respect. So I think it's great to bring attention to the diverse parts of our population. I think too, they might like how we de-stigmatize that, right, so people get the service they need. But it's tough, as you guys know, you're doing it every day.
I'm always grateful to hear that transitions has been in the buildings. I think that's, they're always here to bring guidance with the social media, with the bullying that, that, you know, and belonging issues that so many students feel. So thank you for allowing them and welcoming them, and also thank you for the speakers. I, I think I follow some of your activities on social media, and I think that's really helpful because I find myself mentioning, oh, you know, did you see there's an opportunity to volunteer? I know a lot of 20-year-olds or teenagers who want to help out. So thank you for continuing to, you know, with, with the various ways that you do, keep the community informed about what you mean. You know, and that way, hopefully, you'll get more people and taking advantage of the great service you provide.
Thank you for the presentation. I can't believe you passed up the opportunity to sneak out. Thank you for staying for the rest of the evening and thanks for the presentation.
We had talked before about how we get so much email from the Pennsylvania School Board Association, and maybe we don't read them all, since I'm new, I'm still reading them all, just to let you know. And in addition to doing my new board member training, they also offer online trainings there as well, and there was one that caught my eye today for sort of data, better understanding of the type of data that school boards do. They have four online sessions, which I registered for today, and of course, the first one is the same time we'll be having our next board meeting, of course, but we'll see if there's any slides from that. And yeah, I just wanted to say, as a parent and board member, we heard last time about the field trip planned for the band and the chorus to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. And what I understand is they postponed the deposit because they're finding out if, with the hurricane-pelling devastation down there, that will affect the trip in any way. So our fingers are certainly crossed, and hearts go up for the people down there, and you know, hopefully that, that trip will go through, since we heard about that last time, I thought I'd share that for.
Yeah. We talked with the music department as well, just about kind of plans and pause on deposits until there's a better plan to kind of, how to move forward.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all for coming, appreciate it too. Thanks for all the great work you guys have done, the community has to do, at the building. It's always true that no news is good news, and I think for the most part, we don't really hear none, which is good, you know, and things are running smoothly and, and that's always good. I will share just a piece of community news of last night, the Regional Police Commission willing to hire a new police chief as of December, so hopefully, once we get him in place, he'll be reaching out to the district to make, make friends. Thank you.
Wonderful presentation, thank you. Always, always good to hear about, and I think sometimes people think of Lewisburg in a certain way, and like, everybody has enough of everything, and that's not true. And I'm sure it's a barrier for people not wanting to go out to say like, I live in Lewisburg and need assistance. Also, I think hearing about all the stuff with the voting is going to happen, I've been hearing about it all week. I do think it's a difficult topic sometimes that people don't want to navigate, but it's so important for us to be able to educate our kids on how important it is to vote and the rights that we have, and just what those rights are and how to implement to them. And I think it seems like what's happening is going to happen, so that's awesome.
Yeah, thank you all also for coming. I think as, you know, echoing what Jamie said, I think there's a lot of assumptions that are made about Lewisburg, and they're not always true. I think Lewisburg is also changing, and we need to change to meet the needs that are changing. And the first step of that is to educate people more on that. So I absolutely love the idea of a cooperation more with you guys and again, working through our Health and Wellness Committee now at the district level, you can definitely start thinking of, of things we can do to help each other out. So thank you. I'm going to give a shameless plug for Dragon Dash next Thursday. If you don't know any elementary students, find one, they all have envelopes, or visit any one's Facebook page at the elementary level, and you can find the link to donate. That is next Thursday. I also am just going to draw attention to the elephant in the room and say, Mr. Hoffmaster, we will miss you. Not to be the one talking about something nobody wants to talk about, but you are so well-respected by fellow staff members, by your students. We get it, but you are losing you with a loss. So thank you.
So we'll celebrate Mr. Hoffmaster at a future board meeting and all have a turn at sharing very positive. I'll say thank you again to those who presented. Evan, you were a tiny elementary student not so very long ago. And it's so great to see both you and Rachel here in your roles as, as wonderful adults working in the community. Principals, I ask you to come and bring information, and I never hear it ahead of time, so I'm just as captive as to what you might share, and, and I love that it's such a variety. And to your point, Dr. Mattis, it's some of the really good stuff that otherwise might not come across for everyone, so that's a positive as well. Thank you.
Oh, actually, sorry.
Thank you for the presentation, I'd be remiss, but I'm always amazed when I see those stats, you know, things like, like half the kids just, I don't know, I guess they do pack, I guess. Their parents pack. I can, I can tell you, I remember when my, when my son was in middle school, and he did pack frequently because if he didn't pack, he didn't get to go spend 12 minutes outside for recess, or I don't know, something crazy that maybe that's the hand, and I didn't care, but I didn't pack his lunch, he did it himself, or he did it out. But I bought many a lunch too, especially in the high school, and I think I bought more than one on some occasion. But anyway, the, the stats on that are always interesting, so, and, and we do talk at length about things like the breakfast program because it, not only is it good for kids, it's good for, it's good for the budget, for everything in the current environment, but we haven't, we haven't figured a way to get that message out or get over the stigma or whatever it is that keeps people from taking advantage of the, of the opportunity, but hopefully the message will, will eke out there somewhere. And then what Justin Targ, I read in the paper, say about the new, the new hire, and it reminded me, I got a, even though I wasn't able to attend because I was out of town, the, one of our twice-yearly school safety meetings happened while I was away, and I got some positive feedback from some of our first responders who did attend. So for those of you who were part of that, Vince, your name was mentioned a few times, so thank you for that, and apparently was well-received.
I'll share, as everyone did, we appreciate the work so much, and we do, I mean, like I said, we stay conscious of the number of students that are in need, and we also are aware of the ones who don't fill out paperwork, right, and that's something we need to capture. As Kristin shared, right, you're leaving, and that's, yeah, I mean, you can still decide not to. Yeah, you know, I've, I've known you for a really long time, I've worked with you at a lot of different capacities, you're so well-liked and so well-respected and regarded, so, yeah, big shoes to fill, probably literally as well. And now I forget the other thing I was going to say, but I think we can, we can adjourn. Yes. Yes, I'm looking for. Oh, there you go. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. We don't, we don't need to go back here because we could decide next, and because I didn't.